This meeting will be called at orders. Thank you for your patience this evening. Dr. Meads, will you also give your call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Worthy?
Here.
Ms. Swains?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Bybee?
Here.
Dr. Knox?
Here.
Ms. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Rawls?
Thank you, Dr. Meads. We please stand and join us for the silent meditation and then the pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much. We will start our meeting with a few recognition of achievements for...
Good evening to the President, to the members of the Board of Education. Tonight I have the privilege of recognizing three outstanding individuals who are members of our Clark County School District community. Honored, as I called today and described through recognition, please come up, receive your certificate, and shake a hand with the board members. This year, Dr. Meads has decided to institute a Better Every Day Award which is reflective of our new vision and mission as Clark County School District. This award is for members of our Clark County School District community who exemplify a strong commitment to ensuring that our district is truly better every day. Mr. Mark Hart is a math teacher at Clark, sorry, at Hillsman Middle School. I'm sorry, Mr. Martin, I like that. At Hillsman Middle School. He is also a former Clark County School District student graduating from Cedar Show's High School. Mr. Martin has embraced the district's core professional principles of educational equity and problem-solving by spearheading and creating a Saturday morning math tutorial program for Clark County School District students. He works specifically with students from the Nellieview community. Students in Mr. Martin's program are provided breakfast and receive a high-quality tutoring in math from caring adults like Mr. Martin. And when I greeted him this evening, I asked if he enjoyed the day off, and he said to me, "It's never a day off." And I think it's that attitude that has made him truly an educator who exemplifies the qualities of being better every day. So, Mr. Martin, please come up. We thank you for recognizing and having us. First official Better Every Day Award. Mr. Martin has used his special talent to help guide our young students to greatness. Next, we have Ms. Amanda Price, a visual arts instructor at Clark Central High School. She has brought the distinguished honor to our school's district in herself by being asked to present at a national conference that its father explained in the following manner. National Non-Art Education Association received over 1,700 presentation proposals this year. Selection relied upon scoring criteria for the blind peer review and selection process. The peer review process ensures that each proposed presentation receives three separate blind reviews and employs careful thought and courageous consideration in terms of the statement of purpose and outcomes, organization of content, relevance of topic, and then the impact on practice. This year, 763 sessions were accepted, 35 percent of those who applied, which makes it highly competitive. We are very proud of Ms. Price for being chosen to present at this conference. Congratulations. Last but not least, we have Mr. Bo Shell, a student at Cedar Show's High School. The United States Chamber of Commerce awarded Bo Shell a Little Ice Cream Dew LLC from Athens, Georgia with the 2018 Young Entrepreneur Business Award during its annual Dream Big Awards celebration. The annual awards ceremony celebrates the achievements of small businesses and honors their contributions to America's economic growth. Bo was the youngest of the three founders chosen for this award. He is a ninth-grade student at Cedar Show's High School. The Young Entrepreneur Business Award recognizes these young entrepreneurs between the ages of 14 and 20 years old who own and operate small businesses that have been successful and make an economic impact. Bo is in the A&amp;P Government Class of Ms. Elder. He was here with him this evening. And she has been able to apply the principles learned in his class as he participated in a Main Street Ambassador Program. As an ambassador, he was able to travel to Capitol Hill and met with his Georgia representatives on behalf of small businesses and tax reform. He had an awesome time and learned a great deal. Bo will be able to continue to apply the knowledge gained as he exceeds and succeeds in Ms. Renata Elder's classroom. Congratulations, Bo. This concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you all.
Thank you, members. The next item for us to do is to amend or adopt our agenda.
Approve that... Approve that the agenda is adjourned for this recognition.
Mr. Worthy, thank you. Second by Ms. Davis.
Just for clarity, is there a possible legislative session? Is there one? Is there?
There is not one. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions regarding the agenda? All in favor of adopting the agenda? Thank you, two opposed. Thank you. And tonight, typically in our agenda, we hear from the public at this point, but nobody has signed up to comment today, so we will move on to the next agenda. Is that correct?
In terms of just recognition of...
Okay. Yes, please, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was waiting a little bit later, but since I had to do this, we'd like to recognize David Matheny, who is with us tonight. David has served on the, and still is serving, I think he might have been one of the original members of the Board of the Athens Clark Community Academy. So, we are just simply saying we have decided to have one of their board members meet with us every month, both the work session and the voting session. So, we appreciate again the additional commitment that your board is making, and thank you for being with us tonight, Mr. Matheny.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much for being here on our floor. Next on our agenda, we have a number of information items that are included in the packet and posted on board docs for the public who are interested. Those include early head start, Head Start Policy Council meeting minutes and reports, a SLOs report, Athens Community Career Academy report, and the Parent Advisory Board report. Again, those are prior information and part of, on board docs.
We have some questions relative to the Parent Advisory Board. Do we have a place of leave for this month? I'm not aware of who's attending, if anyone this month. Isn't it next Monday?
Yes, ma'am. The Parent Advisory Board has made a request that they will have a board-on-board meeting with the entire Board of Education, and in lieu of having individual board reps go to their monthly meetings, they would prefer to have at least one, if not two, board-on-board meetings this year. So, there's no need for you to identify a board member to attend individual monthly meetings. They'll have a... Again, we have to look at the schedule, make sure they're looking at schedule, and at least one, if not two, meetings a year with their board and this entire Board of Education.
And that would take place in a board session?
It will be actually, it will be part of a real session.
To further clarify that, does that mean this will not show up in our agenda every month? Unless we're getting something like a copy of their minutes or some kind of...
I can request that you receive their minutes, nonetheless.
I think that would be very unofficial to the board to know the issues they're discussing in the board meetings.
Great success.
That would be part of, that would be the only thing.
We'll continue to bring you the board minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Great success, thank you, Ms. Williams. We have a number of committee reports at the board. First is Finance Committee. Okay, thank you. Government Relations Committee.
Just want to announce that we're meeting next week on Tuesday at 4:30. And we're going to be honing in on our agenda, our legislative agenda next year, as well as mobilization of the community, if there's a particular issue that we think the legislation would benefit through lobbying. So, that's 4:30 on Tuesday.
Thank you. And the Policy Committee, I don't know if this is going to be through the other report from Policy Committee? And then, I know several of the policies that we've been discussing are important to lots of people in here will be discussed at the Policy Committee meeting on Monday at 4 o'clock. Is that right?
Four members should have received an email this afternoon where, just like now, we're meeting in board docs for our Policy Committee meeting. So, we'll all learn together and have a pre-electoral pack on their way, send instructions if you prefer to print the packet, and maybe that straight to the board doc.
Great. Any questions, Policy Committee? Thank you. And is there a report from Property Committee?
There's no, there's no report, but there has been a Property Committee meeting scheduled with Vice Chair Ellis for October 27th, 4:30 start of time.
Thank you.
It's just for clarity and transparency, the purpose of the meeting is to discuss the potential pursuit of the property for, for the career, for their continued expansion of their property.
Thank you. Dr. Meads, what time did you say? I don't have a calendar here. 4:30.
And then, as many of you know, the Board of Education sits on several boards and other committees out in the community, and we'll hear some reports from our work in those communities as well. First is the Athens Area Community Foundation.
I'm sorry. On October the 24th, from 4:30 to 5:30, there will be a reception here from five students, eighth graders, who have, will be receiving the Reach Scholarship and in this Governor Needles Initiative. This scholarship, these students graduate, they will receive $10,000 at the time of graduation, parentheses, $2,500 a year, and they can use it in Georgia University System. This year, the scholarship, I guess recipients are Destiny Strickland from Coyle Middle, Tayana Turner from Hillsman Middle, Joseph Parham from Clark Middle, Lynn Palm of Bernie Harris Lions, and Jose Jimenez Cortez of Coyle Middle. I'm sure as we get more information that we will be inviting these students to come and shake our hand and encourage them to finish school and get that $10,000. The other thing that is not part of my committee, but as Commissioner-elect, we met last night at Sandy Creek Nature Center, and it is amazing. And we partner with the Sandy Creek Nature Center already. I know we had an agreement with them. We were all really impressed. I haven't been out there, I think, since my boys were young. But on November the 30th, they're having a reception for Clark County School District for board members and for principals to come and see the new things that they have out there. And I just wanted to put that out there. I don't know how many invitations are going to be sent out. It's going to be on, I think, November, I think, it's October, when it's Halloween.
Excellent. 30 words.
So, this is, so we should, if we can go, because they're talking, they're doing after-school programs, they're doing hands-on, they're doing a lot of things that I think we could benefit. And my question was, with all the good things are gone, you know, we should be kind of connected to these type of initiatives. So, look for the invitation. You will not be disappointed if you got it.
Thank you. The next item is Community Oversight Committee. I'll give that report. We had a meeting on October 9th, just a few days ago, and in this committee, we discussed all the projects that we have, we're spending SLOs dollars on. So, there's, we're wrapping up a few punchless items on Old Thorbannon Elementary School, but that school is fully functioning and going well. We're also digging into a project here at the Career Academy around a cosmetology lab, state-of-the-art and one of the best in the state of cosmetology labs, and it's all finished. We have students who are signed up and ready to go, but that opens first of the year. Am I right, sir? We have projects going on at Coyle Middle School, at Bernie Harris Lions, and at Hillsman. All of these projects are also on track to, and to be completed, as scheduled, and they're going well. You try to ask Hillsman, you'll start to see the skeleton of a building keeping up the fence, so that's exciting, exciting news. And sales tax revenue, we also have a report on the sales tax revenue, which has been healthy, and we are starting to see that the football season, well, in sales tax revenue, which is always a good thing to see, and we appreciate all of that and all the athletic programs that draw people to town. Next report will be from A Vision Athens.
Thank you. And so, A Vision Athens is up alive and very active. There are 14 subgroups that are still working to implement priority strategies for those particular areas, including education, land development is a big one, and just trying to remember quickly, of course, education, that's the one we're most heavily involved in. But if you simply go to A Vision Athens dot com, the schedule is there for all of those meetings. They're open to the public, and it is where all of the stakeholders, the people that are actually responsible for implementing the initiatives, have those meetings, they have those conversations, and they can participate in several from different committees, and the commitment from our community to making sure that these missions occur is just unreal. So, I really appreciate our school system for making time to participate in the education part, especially the Career Academy and their leadership role there in driving this huge theme around preparing our kids for workforce as well as college career readiness. The other thing I'd like to mention is that the committee itself has an evaluation process, so we are evaluating how we're implementing the strategies that the community has defined for us, and I think there will be opportunities for community input on that. That too will be on the website. More importantly, in terms of being very transparent, there's a huge spreadsheet that our executive, I think she's our project implementer, project planner, Erin Barger keeps, and every single initiative is updated on that spreadsheet, and so that will be pushed forward for public consumption, probably on a quarterly basis, so that you can actually see all the details behind the work that's happening for this mission.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Davis. And then, Foundation for Excellence in Public Education.
Thank you. I'll just say, the Foundation for Excellence Public Education had its awards to fund Money United of Georgia, and thanks to the people that were there, Jared, Linda, Carol, and myself, as well as Dr. Meads and members of the administration. The FFA board greatly appreciates the recognition that's been provided to its awardees and the connection with the board, so I know they would like me to convey that they're very happy with the relationship, and we'll just keep doing that in the future.
It was a positive event. It was really great to hear from all the board members. Thank you for that report. And finally, Georgia's School Board Association.
I have no view.
Thank you. Then moving on in our agenda, to item H, minutes of previous meetings, we have received the minutes from the work session September 6th, 2018. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Second by Mr. Worthy. Thank you. Any questions around those? All in favor? Thank you. We received minutes from regular meetings, September 13th, 2018. Thank you, Ms. Worthy. Is there a second on those? Ms. Davis, thank you very much. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Financial Report for Mr. Hamel.
Good evening, board members, staff, and audience. We're going to talk about the July and August 2018 financial statements.
First, my last one.
The first financial statement for July, you can see we have a strong cash balance of $29.16 million. The fund balance is... And our fund balance at the end of the month for July was $23 million. If we go further down to the revenue expenditures, we'll see July and August usually are bright months because we have a lot of coals. We move back to June, so the month of July, it's in total, we had revenue recognition of $625,000, and we had expense recognition of $2.4 or almost $2.5 million. If you could switch over to August real quick, Glenn, because... What topics? Cash. At the end of August, we had a cash balance of $23.4 million, fund balance, balance of $23.2, which are all strong. We will show more detail on the cash flow. If you look at the expenses and revenue, we, the month of August, we brought in... We brought up $1.77 million revenue and hit $7.56 million expenditures. Switch to the cash flow. What you're looking at is the cash flow broken down by month, columns in yellow are actual data, the columns in blue are budget data broken down by month by function level. Can you get a little bit bigger, please? Let me switch to the right. So, with two months of actual data and 10 months of budget data, if you go down to the end of the revenue, there you go. We had projected $150.1 million revenue currently, with two months of actual data versus 12 months of budget data, we're predicting $138.3 million revenue, which right now, we have a surplus of revenue of a budget of about $178,000. Go down the expenses, please. On the expense side, two months of actual data, 10 months of budget data, we have a projected expense budget of $150.99 million. Current number projected to have $150.7 expenditures, which right now, we are under-expending our budget on expenditures by $290,000. Combined of those two amounts is that we had a deficit built on budget right now currently of $848,000, with the extra revenue and less expenses coming in. That deficit right now is only at $379,000. Can you switch the KPIs, please? So, with that being said, if you take the July August data and plot it on this map, what we're looking at is the red line is 2019 data, the black line for you is 2018 data. So, we're trying to compare where we are from last year. As you can see, the fund balance is following the model from 2018, and right now, we're closer to where 2018 went as a cash position. I don't believe that's going to change over the life of the year. If you go down to income collection percentage and expense percentage collection, as you can see, the blue lines there are the amounts year-to-date of income collected, also expenses paid, and the red line to represent the current year. We are a little bit on par below where last year collections, but we're also a little bit ahead on expenses paid. One reason we're ahead on expenses paid is the budget is a lot larger than it was last year, so that's why we're a little bit ahead there. If you can go down to the next slide, please, then. Can you make that a little bit bigger, please? This pie chart represents the income for the month of August of $1.1 million. As you can see, the biggest part of the pie, $1,200,000, that is money coming from KPE that is state funds. A little bit the expense side, please. So, the month of August, we had delivered over $5 million in expenditures, and as you can see, the biggest part of that pie are the 1.4 and 1.5, net services, destructions, and maintenance and operations. And the last one, please. Second last. What we do here is we take the budget for revenue and the budget for expenses, and we plot it out from July through June. So, the black line is the budget, plot it out, and the red line, the top of the line is the expenses, excuse me, is the actual data for budget review and budget expenditures. If we were either behind or below, you'd see that line diverge above or below it, but right now, we're currently budget for both of those categories, revenue and expenditures. And the last line is the deficit. The actual budget, as it was approved back in June of 2018, was a zero-balance budget with no deficit. We had some items that were carried over from last year to this year, which created a deficit, and at the end of July, we had about $100,000 deficit, and currently, we have a deficit which is below $400,000. And that's based on the change in the budget from June of last year to the end of August. And that is the financial statements for the month of July and August, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hamel. Any questions from the board, Mr. Hamel? Can I have a motion to approve the budget? Thank you, Dr. Knox. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Williams. All in favor? Thanks a lot. Mr. Hamel has a tough job. Not only is this a complicated organization, it's a complicated set of numbers, but she has to keep strict for us, and he does a fantastic job, and he also has to help us understand them, and he does a great job on both sides, and we appreciate all his work on that. The next item on our agenda is around policy. We have a number of policies, regulations, exhibits to be posted for public review for four weeks, and these include Policy GAE, Policy GBI, sorry, let me read the full, the full name. This is Policy GAE, Complaints and Grievances, Policy GBI, Professional Personal Evaluation, Regulation GBI R1, Professional Personal Evaluation, Policy GBRIG, Federal Family and Medical Division. Policy GBRIG, Federal Family and Medical League Act; Exhibit GBRIG E1, Employee Serious Health Condition; Exhibit GBRIG E2, Family Members Serious Health Condition; Policy GBRJ, Arrangement for Substitutes; Policy GCN, Classified Personnel Separation; and Policy GBU, Professional Personal Ethics. And it's suggested that we post all of these for public review. For any of you that were part of our work session as well, we had two other policies. Policy that are not going to be posted for public review are going to be discussed more in policy meeting on Monday. But we have our list for posting for public review, and then we'll get the input from public on these policies for the next four weeks if we approve this. Is there a motion to set these up for public review?
Yeah, that's right. Then I move that we post these policies for public review for four weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. A second by Ms. Davis. Thank you very much. Any questions around posting these for four weeks? All in favor? Thank you. And we also have a number of policies to adopt. These are Policies JBCC, Student Assignment Revised; Policy JBCCA, Student Assignment; Exhibit JBCCA E1, Student Assignment; Regulation JBCA, Student Assignment; Policy JCDAV, Student Apologies; Policy BBC, sorry, Court of Meetings; and Policy BH, Board Code of Ethics. These are policies that have been out for four weeks in the UCD.
So, we actually only received one public comment making a claim this afternoon, which is why you can receive it electronically. May I read it?
Please.
"Thank you for the edits to this policy and this comment on JBCC and JBCA, especially in JBCC Children of Employees Section C, which is very clearly stated and in support of employees and their children. I appreciate the time and effort spent clarifying this policy and am immensely grateful that as an employee, my children's school experiences are valued and respected."
That's a nice public comment, Tracy. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Dr. Myers. Is there a motion to adopt these policies? Ms. Davis, thank you very much.
Thank you.
A second by Mr. Worthy. Any questions or comments around these policies? All in favor? Thank you. Any votes? Great. Thank you very much. And thank you, Dr. Myers, and the Policy Committee for all the hard work on this, and it's been an uneasy task, and we appreciate all that you put in, all you put into these. Item K on our agenda is a superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President, and board members, community, on a few items. The first is just to, I don't know, recognize and talk about this issue of our transitional report dots. It's a very important and, I think, newsworthy. When I arrived a little over a year ago, there was, as I have meetings regarding our district and transitioning into the organization, there were questions around transparency and what was available to the public and what was not available to the public. I hope that board members and the community recognize that through board dots, every piece of data the board has is also accessible to the public. It's just our ongoing effort to trust the transparency issue. I want to take this opportunity to thank Doctors Zanona Thomas and Mary Wickwire for their efforts and also broadcasting our meetings as a transition from when I initially arrived. The broadcast is now online, and so that's really exciting. According to Ms. Wickwire, it is, we do have viewers that jump online and watch. We're going to continue to try and build up board dots in a way where you can, there's features in board dots that will allow the public to monitor votes from the board electronically as they come in. So, as you look in the back screen here, there will be a way to even report out in real time the votes from the board meeting, which I've learned in the past, people really do appreciate. So, I just wanted to recognize the work of Ms. Angela Tillman and Dean Vodica for transitioning and moving over a lot of documents from our old system to this very new transparent and digital platform. The second item that I have, I know that this is of great interest, so I just wanted to give a preview to it now. At our November board meeting, staff, I plan to present academic calendars for the 2019-2020 school year and the 2020-2021 school year. I think last school year, with it being my first year, we didn't bring those calendars to the board until later this school year. In our attempt to be friendly to our families, we want to get this information out to people as soon as possible for their planning purposes. It's convenient to know that our partners at the University of Georgia already have their calendars planned out for the new years. I hope so. Alignment of dates are helpful. The most challenging so far has been trying to identify when the Georgia and Florida football game is in place. I've been told that's something that we have to pay attention to. But in all seriousness, it's been a very good process. We have teachers from our teacher advisory board who provide input on these calendars, just for the public's sake. During our first meeting, there was a lot of discussion regarding a fall break and how does a fall break fit into our overall calendar. And we examined what other school systems are doing around us. The thing that we discussed, and we all have to keep in mind, is that those school systems are starting much earlier than we do, with the goal of being able to leverage those days during an October fall break, February break. And so, we have to try to balance when our students and staff can come back earlier, which ties back a little bit into Mr. Davis's Government Relations Report. We should all just be aware of the fact that there is a bill that has been floated in the legislature, and I assume that it will be taken up in the next session of placing a date on when you can start school. The Tories and the industry here in the state of Georgia have stated that it's detrimental to their business to have school start so early, and so they're floating a bill to mandate that schools cannot start until after Labor Day. So, we should continue to watch that bill. I, I, I'll just, not to get into detail, I just want to be sure the community who are working on these calendars will have a rate for war action in November, but I would conclude this portion by saying I come from a state that implemented a similar law. And I think Mr. Davis, Dr. Knox, Ms. Thornton, who are all part of the Government Relations Committee, would ask you to continue to watch their work. If we have to advocate against that bill, we should be prepared to do so in the name of local governance and local control. We've taken away from this board of education. I can attest to the fact that if that law is put in place, it's virtually impossible to turn it around. On the Tories and the industry, is that horrible? And so, we'll need to have parents speak out if that moves forward. But my sole purpose is just to let parents know that they can start planning based on the calendars that we'll present next month. Two final points. We have parent-teacher conferences next week, 17th, 18th, and 19th. We're really excited about the opportunity to partner with parents again. We have a high attendance rate from our families to parent-teacher conferences, and we view it as an opportunity for us to dive off the top of all of the next steps are in helping young people grow, not only academically, but socially and emotionally. So, we encourage all of our families to come out for parent-teacher conferences, the 17th, 18th, and 19th. We're, I think, we're very close to having our board workshops, workshop dates confirmed for November 2nd. And third, we're finalizing the agenda now. I have a meeting with our board president and vice president early next week. Once we are able to meet, we'll get that agenda out to not only the board but the public. The primary focus of that board workshop, and I call it a workshop because if we call it a retreat, sometimes people in the community will say, "So, where are you going for a retreat?" We're not going in. We're going to be right here in this building, so there's no public funds going towards a retreat. So, that's why we're calling it a board workshop. And the primary focus of that workshop would be to unpack the administration's recommendations around our future facility use report. That report will include a lot of different items that I believe will be of the interest of the community. So, again, our preliminary dates are November 2nd in the evening from 6:00 to 8:30, and Saturday, November 3rd from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And again, the purpose, the primary purpose, is to unpack many components of our comprehensive future facility use report. The final thing I'll share with you, and you heard it from Doctors Zanona Thomas earlier, this district has a history of having an award given to people, I believe in the past, it was called the Four Star Award that you gave out. We're re-instituting something similar to that award, the Better Every Day Award. You saw our first awardee this evening in Mr. Martin. Our language of the Better Every Day is just not a tagline. It's something that we truly believe in, that we want to take a look at the assets that every child brings to our school system, not the deficits that they have to try to get over and get past. Every child, regardless of their zip code, has some level of challenge. What we're trying to convey, what I firmly believe in, is that we have to look at the assets and the promise that, the gifts that every child brings to our school system, and everybody, every family brings to us as a challenge. A couple of weeks ago, my wife went out of town, and we only have one child. But for five days, I had my daughter, and the staff heard about it. It was, it was, that was interesting. At times, it was a challenge for me to get her dressed, get her fed, get her to school. And I thought about that in the context of, we have families in our community who didn't have all the advantages that I had during those five days to get their children, not their child, but their children ready. And it put it in context for me as well, because my wife went home to see her mom. My mother-in-law is a woman who has a high school diploma. She raised four children, and three are college graduates, and one has served the military with an honorable discharge. I share this story to say, my brief five-day period of taking care of my one child pales in comparison to what many of our families go through every day, and they don't have the same resources that I had during those five days. And when I think about my mother-in-law, who had a high school diploma and worked hard and got her children to a better place, I share this story with you to say that we always have to look at the assets that our families bring to us and not talk about what they don't have. And it knocks me so much time discussing the trauma that they're coming from, because I think that minimizes their greatness that they bring to our classrooms, that they bring to our schools. And there is never one right answer. And I think when you have a great time like Athens, Clark County, there's going to be various opinions. And all those opinions should be held, and not, but when I think about our kids, our kids who work hard to come to school every day, the families who work hard, and here, I want to always have those conversations from the perspective of, let's say, what they bring to the table and that asset that they bring versus discussing things in a way where it almost feels like we're trying to fix them and that here's something that's going to help them. Where in reality, we're ignoring the beauty and magic that there are in the right choice. That's the conclusion of my report. I would be remiss if I didn't say that we had a great team that made a very difficult decision yesterday in a close school, based on the reports that we had at the time. It looked like we were going to have some tough weather. I'm thankful that we did not. And if anything, it's an unofficial fall break for children and staff. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Dr. Means. And I'd like to echo the big thanks to all of your staff. It really takes a village to, you mentioned the board talks and streaming their meetings. It takes a lot of people to help us be educated and pull off a good and productive meeting and to keep our kids safe, like you did with a college school off today. So, I just wanted to echo that thanks from the board, and we appreciate all the work you've been doing. Any questions for Dr. Means on the report? I also wanted to mention, this isn't scientific by any means, when you mentioned the possibility of starting school after Labor Day, 100% of the students in the crowd were nodding excitedly. 100% of the parents in the crowd shaking their heads, taking that as what it's worth. The next item on our agenda is item L, Consent Agenda. And we have field trips, we have approval of CTAE Annual Plans for Middle High School Programs. We have a request to submit RFP for 21, 21st Century Grant, we have to approve 21st Century Grant for elementary students. Approve the 21st Century Grant for middle school students. Approve the 21st Century Grant for high school students. Approve the firewall purchase. Approve the Local Board Governance Training Plan for FY19. Approve LED site lighting installation for BHL and Core Middle Schools. All these items are part of our consent agenda. A motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I approve, that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Worthy. Give a second. Mr. Davis, thank you so much. All in favor? Any votes? Thank you.
Mr. Bobby, Mr. President, Ms. Thornton made a request at our work session last week about our compliance agreement plan. So, Ms. Thornton, can you make sure that everyone received that?
I have to put my glasses on, but I can see it.
So, I just wanted to make sure that everyone recognized that.
And I really wanted to tell you how much I appreciate this quick turnaround. I know when requests come from board right then and might be like a deer in headlights, but I do appreciate when we do make a request and it's responded to. And as I get it, but I hope that we'll use this as we move forward.
Thank you. And then, we have item N, which is approval of personnel recommendations. Have you received a number of personnel recommendations? Dr. Williams, help advocate for them.
No, sir.
No, sir.
And staff? Excellent. Um, this should be part of the Board Doc packet. I have it here in my binder. Yeah, October 28th, this one here. Uh, here's the scroll back at the very top. Select the, uh, the Board Doc item that's called the, uh, record of some decisions. Okay. Ms. Thornton, thank you very much. A second, Ms. Davis. Uh, I'll take that. Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Dr. Means, where are we in terms of, are we fully staffed now in terms of particularly certified staff?
We have about 10 positions.
We have had some resignations, adjutant services, scooters, and, and, though resignations have been for various reasons, and that's why we feel like we're always trying to get to a fully staffed position. That is an estimated 10 to shoot, our major.
And, uh, we have a, a motion, a second, to approve these personal recommendations? All in favor? Thank you, Ms. Davis. And then the final item on our agenda is to adjutant. Thank you. And, Mr. Worthy? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you very much for being here.